And now we are on air. Good evening. My name is Darcia Durking and on behalf of the League, I would like to welcome you to the City of Victoria Candidate Forum. We thank both the candidates and our audience for attending tonight and our online audience for viewing. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose a political party or a candidate for office. The League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County has a longstanding history in our community of providing unbiased candidate and issue information that is widely used by Minnesota voters regardless of their political beliefs. Sponsorship of this forum is a public service, providing you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss important issues face to face. The views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the League of any particular candidate. There is never enough time to cover all the issues. If you feel that your question was not addressed, please contact the candidate directly after the forum. All candidates for Victoria City Council were invited to participate. Candidates who chose to attend tonight are Christian Pedersen, Chad Roberts, and Cam Wright. And now I would like to introduce our moderator. Sarah Carlson is a certified moderator from the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County. Sarah.
Thank you, Darcia, and good evening. Welcome to the Candidate Forum for the City of Victoria. We will start the Candidate Forum with opening statements. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes for their opening remarks and one and a half minutes for a closing statement. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order. The order of answering questions and the closing statements will be rotated based on a randomly generated grid. Candidates will have up to one and a half minutes to respond to the questions. Depending upon the complexity of the question, I may announce less time per question. Please note our timekeepers, Ann Coats and Suzie Miller, who have a 30-second and a 15-second sign. They will also have a stop sign or will call time to be sure that each candidate has the full time allotted. The first question has been prepared by the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County, and additional questions will be those submitted by the voters here and those that were submitted to the League's email address. Let's begin with the opening remarks, and that would be Candidate Pedersen.
Ready? Thank you, League of Women Voters and everyone in attendance. I want to ask you, if you ever visited someplace and you wanted to stay, that's what happened to my wife and I 22 years ago. We've lived here in Victoria for 21 years, and I'm extremely excited about this opportunity, and I very much love this community. Once I moved here, it took me a very short amount of time to jump into community involvement, joined our homeowners association, got to work with the city on that. I got a chance to be the next door administrator, one of the first in the area. I still moderate that at this point in time. And then eight years ago, I was asked to be on the Citizens Park and Recreation Committee, which I accepted. For the last five years, I've been on the Planning Commission where I've acted as a chair, excuse me, as a vice chair and as a commissioner at large. I graduated from the first ever Victoria Citizens Academy, which deepened my understanding of the way the city works, operations, and everything else in between. I was actively involved in the development of the city's 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the city's three-year strategic plan, and on the business side of things, I founded and led my own startup company for the last 15 years. I guess we can't really call it a startup anymore. I think all these experiences have helped build a foundation and have allowed me to be prepared to take on this role. Thank you.
Candidate Roberts.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I hope our residents take this opportunity to learn about the three candidates for these two open city council positions. As a current council member, I have worked hard to earn your trust and respect. I will continue to listen and do my best to respond to all calls and emails I receive so you know where I stand on the issues. I believe we are always learning and growing, and as I have talked to our residents and business owners, I believe I have done so over these last past four years. It's okay if we disagree. The important thing is we listen and take other sides' view into account. Over the last four years, Victoria has grown. This has helped our commercial development grow as well. As an example, QuickTrip recently announced that they'll be coming to our South Growth Area, tentatively opening in 2026. We have enhanced public safety and will reduce congestion with the approval of the expansion of Highway 5, the paving of 82nd Street, and the addition of roundabouts at our most dangerous intersections. We will be adding a new fire station with building to start in 2025 to serve us for the next 30 years. Even with all these projects going on, the city has continued to earn AAA bond ratings, something that very few cities have earned. As a council member, I have worked hard to ensure your property taxes are well managed and the services you receive for this investment are a good value. Victoria will continue to grow, and as we do, we must do so strategically and responsibly. If you vote for me, I will continue to work to see Victoria grow responsibly. Thank you.
Candidate Wright.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. My name is Cam Wright. For all of you at home and in attendance, I appreciate you tuning in. My beautiful wife Dana and I have called Victoria home since 2013. Our first stop was Lake Bridge, located down Highway 5 on the west side of Victoria, where I was on the HOA Board as well, the Vice President. We began our journey in Lake Bridge and we started our family there and became part of this wonderful community. Now we have two amazing young boys, Beckham and Grayson, who fill our lives with all their activities, hockey, baseball, football, golf, and soccer. With such a busy schedule, you can imagine I spend a lot of time at the Victoria Rec Center, which is one of my significant issues that I want to address. That along with the Highway 5 project, also the downtown parking, all of these things I want to work with directly with the community with and get their insight. I adore this community. It's where we've chosen to raise my family and aspire for Victoria to be one of the premier cities to live in. With your support, we can prioritize our community and turn this vision into a reality. Thank you.
Thank you all. So let's begin our questions, and we begin our first question with Candidate Wright. What is the biggest challenge facing Victoria?
Thank you. I would say the biggest challenge at the moment is the parking issue downtown Victoria, and I think it's a concern not only from the business owners, which are great, but also the community in general. I know they've tried some different solutions throughout the years and some good ones towards maybe the east side, once things are built up a little bit more, but right now it's an issue, and I think with everybody coming in, I think with the TIF, that everybody should be paying the 25% towards parking, every business, especially the new ones coming in. It's my understanding that the new project may be pulled out on that, which is going to affect us moving forward. And I think the next one coming up is the Highway 5 project, and once again affecting the businesses and the community downtown and how we're going to operate. I feel like the project is maybe needed, but at the same time, I think there needs to be more community understanding because I hear it a lot from people, the concerns, how are businesses going to stay open? Are we just doing this to get people through Victoria and over to Waconia with a smoother path to get through our community but not stop here? Those, I believe, are the two big issues that stand in front of us, and I would say third place would be the Victoria Rec Center. And I'll leave it at that for any questions that may follow later.
Candidate Roberts. Shall I repeat the question?
Sure.
What is the biggest challenge facing Victoria?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge right now is just our overall growth. Victoria is growing fast, right? We have that small-town feel, and many of our residents want us to grow, but we need to grow responsibly. You know, Highway 5 project is something that has been needed for a long time. Anyone who has commuted from downtown or from the east coming this way knows that when, once you hit the arboretum, it is a headache, right? So for our residents, we need that, and for our businesses downtown, we need our roads to be the appropriate for our residents. The city has worked hard with our businesses. We have a plan. We will be going forward with those plans to make sure our businesses continue to thrive and succeed even during the Highway 5 project. There's been lots of literature out there on the arboretum area study, lots of open houses for people to learn about what's going to be going on with Highway 5, but really overall, it's just the growth, right? We just approved a new fire station a few months ago, so we will be building a new fire station in the spring. We just need to keep, you know, finding the finances, right? Again, I talked about we have a AAA bond rating that gives us better loan options and using our taxpayers' money wisely and for the things that they want. So finding those amenities that they want, making... Thank you.
Candidate Pedersen. May I repeat their question?
Sure.
What is the biggest challenge facing Victoria?
Well, I'll take a step back. I think the biggest challenge is using money wisely to make sure that we have fresh drinking water, we have toilets that flush, and roads that run. That's going to include the Highway 5 project, but I think that all falls underneath something called smart growth, where I think we need to employ the ideas of our citizens, the constituents, the business owners, and make sure that we are building the correct types of homes for people and what they want within the city for business and commercial opportunities. You know, we've mentioned the Highway 5 Improvements Project. That's going to be big. It's probably going to be the biggest thing that comes up in 2026. With my experience dealing with businesses for my entire career, dealing with the Park and Rec Board, dealing with the Planning Commission, I've got a background to work with those people, including the Carver County folks, people within the state, and even some of the federal aspects. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, I'll begin with Candidate Roberts. What changes, if any, will you propose to the city codes that would impact the affordability of housing opportunities within Victoria?
Affordable housing is something that the city council has been very important to us, and we've continued to try and look into as much as possible. Victoria is a very, it's a destination area already, and because we're a destination area, it makes our land prices and such more expensive. I don't think, you know, from what, you know, we continue to look at codes and all those different things, but, you know, we need more help to find more affordable housing, right? We've had panels with experts in affordable housing, and, you know, it's a tough thing, and we need, one of the things we've heard is you need to build more housing because it will, obviously, the more housing you have, it will offset prices, and it makes other houses more affordable, same with apartments. So, you know, I'm not sure there's anything in the codes that we can specifically do, but we need to keep looking for every little thing we can do to make housing more affordable for our first-year teachers, our police officers, you know, those people who are waiting our tables at the restaurants we go to. We want people from every walk of life to be able to afford to live and enjoy this great community.
Candidate Pedersen.
I think strong communities have an array of housing options at different price points for a lot of different people. I've participated with Carver County Affordable Housing on a variety of different topics. Quite frankly, in order to get one of those cooking, you've got to give a bunch of land away. I don't know if the constituents of the City of Victoria are ready for that. I do believe that we are creating easier entry point housing in the Southern Growth District. By that, we are using different zoning areas, C1, C2 levels, as opposed to any sort of CBD or Zone 1 type of housing restrictions. So I don't know if there's anything that I could change, but I think that it's something that we are definitely looking at while still maintaining the feel of the City of Victoria. Thank you.
Candidate Wright. Shall I repeat the question?
I'm okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, both great answers by both candidates, and I think the big thing is the price of our land out here being very, we're the destination. That makes it very, very tough. You're not going to get anybody that's going to give their land away just for affordable housing. And I do believe that forums and panels and experts and coming into the community that have done this in other communities where they are the boom, they are the next big thing, the land is expensive, you have to meet with those people and figure it out. I don't think there's a way to change the codes at this time to get that done. I think there's areas in the community, you know, the rise of South Victoria and that area down there. I mean, that council's going to want density as well. You know, you're going to have to work along those lines as well, and I think along the different price points, every community gets it. That's not saying we need to jam it downtown Victoria. I think the goal is to keep this, everybody wants to keep it Victoria and keep it quaint and keep it cool and keep it on the up and up, but there's a place and a time for everything, and I think you need to ease your way into it and not jump to a conclusion on, we need to do this now, we need to do it the right way, and that goes along with everything we're doing in Victoria with a vision, not just do it to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly. Candidate Wright, we're going to begin with you this time. When considering development and redevelopment in the city, how will you plan to bring a grocery store to Victoria?
Well, I know we had Mr. Wartman give that a couple of shots right over here where we have the wonderful Victoria Borough now. I'm not going to sit here and promise you a grocery store. I think there's plans for a QuickTrip to hit 11 and 10 down on the corner there, combined with the new Mackin Toons up on, you know, at the end of the other Highway 11 in the traffic circle, I think with those two things combined. And once again, back to the growth, we have to be careful on how fast we're growing, on how we're making these improvements. We can't just start throwing things around the community until we know where we want to put them, how it's going to get done, who's going to fund it, is it taxpayer money? Is it city money? How is this all going to be done? It needs to be done the right way, the first time, with a vision for the future and the amount of people that are going to use it, drive by it, where's the location? Is there housing around it? Is it at the back of a neighborhood, on the side of a road? All these things need to come to an account. A grocery store is a big thing. I love grocery shopping for my family. I have found the new Mackin Toons is very, very convenient for our community, and I think for now, we tag those two things, and I think we need to tackle some other bigger issues in Victoria than a grocery store.
Candidate Roberts.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably, grocery store is probably one of the top things we always hear about, grocery store and parking, right? So as Candidate Wright said, you know, a QuickTrip is supposed to be coming in a little over a year, a little over a year. It has a lot of grocery items there. You know, it's one of those things where you just kind of have to keep plugging away. You don't want to give the baby with the bathwater, so you don't want to give away the farm, but, you know, it is something we continue to look at, right? The city has continued to look for grocery stores who may be willing to come into the city. You know, we just, we're in one of those positions right now where we are in between, you know, Waconia, Chanhas, and Chaska, a lot of grocery stores, and so it makes it very difficult for a grocer to say, well, you can drive eight miles over here and get them delivered from there, why would we come to Victoria? You know, we're open, I'm open to using, you know, all the tools in our toolbox to try and get a grocery store here, but again, I'm also not willing to give away the farm either, right? So I'll agree with Candidate Wright that, you know, we need to be smart about how we do it. We'd certainly want a grocery store to come to Victoria, but it needs to be in the right area, and it needs to be for the right price. Thank you.
Candidate Pedersen.
I would argue we have some grocery options already with the Butcher's Deli. Now, if we're looking at a full-size grocery store, City of Victoria's had three failed grocery stores in the past 20 years that I've lived here, so if I'm evaluating that as a business, why would I want to build something here? I can't think of a reason why. So we've started to try to figure out different ways to appease or to help make that decision easier for the grocers, and all the, every single one of them to last says, we need more heads and beds, we need more people. So if we want a grocery store, we're going to need to develop and build more homes, some of them affordable, more easy entry points, and at that point in time, we'll hit a critical mass that the grocers will come to us. I think we've got a great step with the QuickTrip coming up down in the Southern Growth Area. That's a pseudo grocery store as well. So I think there's a little bit of try to support what we've got, and hopefully, with the right amount of growth and building, we'll be able to get a grocery store in the next two to four years. And I would hopefully try to put it into the Downtown West 13 and 1/2 acres area, but it won't be up to me, unfortunately. Thank you.
Candidate Pedersen, I'll ask the next question, beginning with you. What are your ideas to increase city revenues and/or reduce city expenses?
Increasing revenues? One idea that is out there that we've proposed within the Planning Commission and has got a little bit of traction is when we do build subdivisions, the builders are required to give us land or to pay for the land. And I would say 75% of the time, they choose to pay, which tells me we're not charging enough. So I believe we can increase revenues that way. I think we've also got to take a look at what the city actually uses. We have no ability to affect your federal tax. We have no ability to affect your state tax. We don't even really get a chance to tell the Carver County folks what your property is worth. What we do is we try to take less from that property tax. My plans for reducing that or maintaining it to the best of my ability is going to be difficult with the Highway 5 project coming up and with the fire station coming up, but I think as we continue to build more homes, we will be able to lessen the tax burden on the people that live here and hopefully help with a little bit more commercial development to drop that burden as well. Thank you.
Candidate Wright.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with the builder scenario. I had failed to mention in my opening that I am on the Parks and Rec Committee of Victoria, and this is something we review a lot, as both these gentlemen know, and it is the choice of when we're helping design the walkways, the connectivity of the paths for the neighborhood, when they go in and they buy their parcel of land, which I think is already being sold way too cheap, we have what they want. We should be charging way more if we own the land, but that's another topic. Or as I said, we have what they want, but he's right, we can pick a park or we can choose to have a parcel of land. We just reviewed one where the builder wanted to give us a parcel of land that was all marsh. Like clearly, we're not going to accept that as a thing. We need to get real land from these people, not just marsh unusable land that we can put a bridge on that is unusable for them to build on. That's the problem. We need to hold these people accountable if they want to come to Victoria and build, and they need to pay us. They need to pay to play in this community. We have what they want, let's get the money from them. That's one thing, and I think it's a really good one. I'd like to know, with this Highway 5 project, how is that going to affect the taxpayers of the community? Once we hit that debt ceiling, I mean, there's only so many ways to get money for a project, right? And if it's taxpayer money, I'm not for it.
Candidate Roberts.
Can you repeat the question, please?
I'd be happy to. What are your ideas to increase city revenues and/or reduce city expenses?
Yeah, so on the revenues front, I mean, the big goal has always been to get more commercial development, and as Commissioner Pedersen has said, you know, we hear more heads and beds, right? So the more, the more building that we do, the more houses, the more apartments, the more commercial development will come. We want to see more commercial development, something like 90-some percent of our revenue, right, is coming from our property taxes, right? So we need to find other ways to supplement that, and that, the biggest way is commercial development. The Roars Project is bringing in between 6 and 9,000 square feet of commercial development space. We keep looking, right, the QuickTrip will be a large commercial development project. Downtown West, we're going to have large, more commercial development. These commercial developments will hopefully continue to help offset and bring in more revenue that our taxpayers will not have to deal with. On the lowering expenses, our staff does a great job of making sure we run a very lean budget. We make sure that things are tight, and we're being a good steward of the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Our next question, I'll begin with Candidate Roberts. What is your process of making decisions about long-term plans regarding parks, trails, lakes, and the infrastructure connecting them?
I think, you know, we have to, one, we have to listen to our residents, right? We, you know, the city does a very good job of, you know, putting out information packets, asking for people's feedback on what they're looking for, right? What other, what types of parks do we want? What other types of additions to our rec center? What other things do they want to do? But I think in general, right, we, the key, and I think the other two candidates touched on a little bit, is the key is when, you know, we're building these developments is, you know, working with the developer to make sure we're getting trail connections done on their dime when they're building these developments so that we continue to have all these trail connections that our residents love, continuing to build parks in these neighborhoods so that each neighborhood has these parks, again, at the developer's expense. There's a lot of ways that we can look to the future, but again, you know, we've done a really good job of when we're looking to the future, we're saying, you know, we have a lot of trail gaps that are very difficult trail gaps, right? Who can, when would their development... Who could, when their development happens, can we use that developer to fill in those gaps for us so that it's not the residents who are paying for those things? Thank you.
Candidate Pedersen.
Can you repeat the question again? It was kind of a big one.
Of course.
Thank you.
What is your process of making decisions about long-term plans regarding parks, trails, lakes, and the infrastructure connecting them?
Gotcha. Thank you. Long-term plans, listen to the community. Listen to the residents, listen to the business owners. I was involved with the 2040 Plan. That is something that we try to use as a roadmap. I've been involved with the three-year plan and then dealing with developers. The developers have to go through a pretty strict process with us, which includes the Planning Commission, Sketch Plat, Preliminary Plat, Final Plat. So there's six different hoops that they have to jump through and to follow that process. And each time, we give advice or try to make it a better place for them. I wasn't, I was involved with the Shoreland Ordinance that the City of Victoria has. Worked with the DNR to put that together that got approved by the City Council. I've been involved with trail gaps and analyzing where the best places are for those. My plan for trail gaps, try to lean on Carver County, try to lean on the state, and then where we can't lean on them, build them ourselves. Biggest problem with those, once we do get them built, is they still require maintenance and upkeep. So we do need to be smart about where we put them and how we put them in place. Hope that answers your question about my process. Thank you.
Candidate Wright.
Yeah, I mean, these two guys touched on, you know, on builders, builders paths, builders connectivities, but I think also the focus needs to be allocated to the parks that we already have in place. We have a lot of parks that need upgrading and there's, there's gaps in old neighborhoods that haven't even been touched yet. The gaps that, that they're speaking of, those are expensive gaps. I mean, those go over marshes and waters and stuff. Like you said, those are hard to get to. Those might be a self-imposed project. But long-term, let's involve Three Rivers, or, and the Three Rivers Park System down here. We need to open these trees up to the downtown so we can see the lake. We need to connect these paths down, down here. Let's give them the sign, let's give them the pat on the back that they did a great job. But let's, let's take advantage of using these partners that we have with these parks and these trails and these lakes so we can utilize them, see them from downtown, but also only with the community involvement, so they can tell us, what kind of park do you want in your neighborhood? They just ripped one out in Deer Run and they put in a park for three-year-olds. Unacceptable. I don't know whose watch that was on, but they did a terrible job with it. The whole, the whole neighborhood thinks it's terrible. My four-year-old thinks it's terrible. So they didn't ask the community anything about that project. That needs to change with every project in Victoria, not just the parks and trails.
We've talked a little bit about, or you have all talked about, big businesses and big developers coming in. But our next question shifts our focus to, what are your plans to support small business growth in Victoria? And we'll begin with candidate Wright.
Extremely important, extremely important. This is what, this is the bloodline of our, of our community is the small businesses. And we can bring this Roars building into play. We don't know what's going to go on that bottom level of it, but what we do know is we have, you know, the Butchers Deli, the Vic's Bar and Grill, the Vic House coming in. We've got to make sure that project is just great. What's the new project's going to look like downtown Victoria? Can we have more walkability? Can, we need to work on parking for the small businesses to succeed in this community. It's extreme, it's the number one issue downtown Victoria, for these people to succeed. But then we need to welcome people with open arms. But when you do come in, you have to, you have to be ready to help out with parking. But we have to open arms to new, exciting ideas for Victoria. We have to let businesses in with a vision. We can't just do the same old thing that the Minnetonka's and the Chanhas's do, even though we love our neighbors. We're Victoria. We want to do things different, fun, exciting, with a vision for Victoria and the downtown area. And that concludes all the small businesses that help pump the blood through the veins of Victoria.
Candidate Roberts.
Yeah, I think, I mean, what, the biggest key is communication. And I think the city has already started, you know, doing a good job with that. We meet with our business owners regularly, city staff do. I, as the council member, try and meet, you know, talk to business owners as much as possible. You know, there's lots we can do, you know. Community events are a big thing, right? We have great events like the car show. We've got our farmer's market downtown. We've, you know, there's been talk of having, you know, specific nights for, you know, down, small business nights in downtown Victoria. So I mean, a lot of it is just listening to the business owners and asking, what do you need from us? What do you want, right? And, and for the most part, I think we're doing the things that they want us to do and see. Obviously, parking is an issue. It's always been an issue. Part of that is, you know, we're landlocked by Highway Five and a lake. So, you know, but we continue to look for innovative ways to try and find parking, right? The Roars Project is going to add, add 35 to, I believe, 40 parking spaces for downtown Victoria. Those are new spaces that, you know, are going to, that have, we've never had before. So again, listening to our, our business owners and being there for them so that we can do what they need us to do for them. Thank you.
Candidate Pedersen.
Well, I think Victoria is a pretty business-friendly community. And as a small business owner myself, I recognize that a lot of the costs are pretty low for entry in the City of Victoria. Like our zoning codes and our ordinances are fair for anyone who wants to start a business here. And I'm going to make sure that we keep it that way. We do have the ability to use financial incentives for some of these businesses. I think those should be preserved for businesses that our community really wants. So again, we need to listen to those folks. But as, as candidate Roberts said, you know, we've got classic car shows, Light Up Victoria, Bulk Fest, farmer's markets. We bring a lot of people and a lot of activity to the City of Victoria through those. And I'd like to see us expand that a little bit more. We've got great cheeseburgers in this town, and I would love to become Cheeseburgerville, USA. I can't guarantee that'll happen, but it's something that might be a little pet project for me. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, let's talk a little bit about yourselves. And we'll begin with candidate Pedersen with this question. Will you give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions or policies?
Sure. I, I mean, there's countless numbers of them that I could give from a business perspective, but I'll use one that is more relatable to the city situation. As part of the Planning Commission, we put together a Shoreland Ordinance that was approved by the City Council. And I'm not kidding you, within two weeks of that going into place, we had a, a group ask for a variance on it. And I mean, we aren't talking about six feet. We're talking like completely blowing this thing up. I wanted to, you know, say right at the beginning, all right, I move to dismiss this. This is not even close. But our job's to listen and to hear what they had to say. They were completely different from what our ordinances said, but we listened to them. We gave them a bunch of different ideas, different things to do. And recently, they've come back and said, all right, here's our new changes. Thank you for helping us. And we kept the community and the community's interest in play. And we also satisfied the business owners. I hope that's, that's one good example. So, thanks.
Certainly. Candidate Wright.
Hi. Not one specific thing jumps out. I think the most important thing, what we need to do with this is everybody needs to work together. Together, we can come to the solution. Whether you're right, you're wrong, that doesn't matter. What's best for the community? That's what, that's what's important in any community project. I'm, of course, I'm going to work with anybody and everybody that comes across, that comes across our docket for Victoria, but only with the community's best interest at heart. So if there's a disagreeing and the community supports the project, I'm on the, I'm on the team of the community. So it's all about the community and the vision, and I'll leave it at that.
Fair enough. Candidate Roberts.
Can you repeat it one more time, please?
Of course. Give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions on policies.
Sure. I mean, it's, I mean, in this day and age, you know, even the most, what you think might be the most mundane and easygoing thing, you know, there's a lot of differing views. And so over the last four years, there have been a lot. I think the key, and I think what I try and do is I always try and listen first. And then two, I try and return emails and calls, right? Not everyone is willing to do that. Not everyone is willing to put their opinion out there because they're afraid that people are going to get mad at them. I will let you at least know where I stand. You may disagree with me, and that's perfectly fine, right? We all have our right to our own opinion. But just know that I'm going to do what I think is best for the City of Victoria while taking on, right? Like I'm going to take into account what this, what people, the residents want. I'm going to take out into account what is going on in the city and things that they may not be aware of because they're maybe either not paying attention or because they're just not seeing what's going on. But I'm going to take all those, all those facts and all those opinions, and I'm going to, I'm going to try to come to the best conclusion I can for the City of Victoria. Thank you.
Candidate Roberts, I'll begin the questions with you. What city policies would you propose, if any, to mitigate and adapt to increasing events of extreme weather?
That's a tough question. I don't know if I have any. I mean, we have, you know, we have the, the sirens that go off with severe weather. You know, I believe we have them in all the appropriate places they should be. You know, I just, again, I think it's communication, whether it's, you know, the city posting things to our social media accounts or websites of upcoming events. You know, I know Carver County does it a lot. Like the Sheriff's Office will post when severe weather is coming in. I think, I think it's mainly just communication, but I'm not really sure there's anything specific I would change. Just again, communication, making sure that obviously our, our technology and our, you know, for instance, again, sirens are, you know, working in correctly and stuff. So, thank you.
Candidate Pedersen.
Repeat that question again.
Certainly. What city policies would you propose, if any, to mitigate and adapt to the increasing events of extreme weather?
I don't think I would implement any new policies. I think the National Weather Service does a great job for us. I think the Carver County Sheriff's Office does a good job for us. I think that, you know, if we're going to brainstorm ideas, there could be an opportunity for some sort of text mesh network to send out messages to everybody's cell phone that's within a certain area. But I think that's going to be expensive and kind of outside of our, of our jurisdiction of what we need to do. So off the top of my head, I probably wouldn't change anything. I think the response is good. Perhaps looking at a few different contractors for cleanup. But after that, I think the city staff does a great job. I think the county does a great job. I think the state does a fair job as well. Thank you.
Candidate Wright.
Yeah, I don't think anything needs to change. I just think we need to make sure that we're on top of the technology for the area. No money comes out of Victoria for that. This is all state-driven, county-driven funding. But as growth happens, we need to make sure that those other areas are covered. I, I do, I would love to see a cleanup after a big storm where we can have city trucks come through and maybe pick up the brush. And it is a, is a trying job. Obviously, we all just went through that recently, kind of back-to-back. And, you know, to bundle things up and, you know, you kind of, you either pay your garbage company to dispose it or you load up a trailer with your neighbors and make a few trips. Maybe that's an option. Yeah, I, I think everybody's a good job. I think just staying on top of technology and making sure money's not coming out of Victoria's pocket for any of it, and it's state and county funded.
Candidate Wright, I'll begin this question with you. What are your plans, if any, about developing a strategy for creation of housing for people who want to remain in Victoria after they have raised their family?
Yeah, I mean, that's a concern with, with the community is to make sure we have a senior housing. And I, we have a wonderful committee and wonderful people on it right now. I think the planning needs to maybe be a little bit more transparent and a little bit more community-driven on what the older generation in our community would like to see. And amenity-wise, and, you know, once again, it's, it's an allocation of land. I don't think that those projects come cheap, just like we're talking about some of our other housing concerns. Land is expensive, but I think it's a top priority of the community to keep people in this community, once their children have left and they want to remain in Victoria in an affordable way. There's nowhere for people to go that's affordable, once their children leave and they're empty nesters and they don't want the big house or any house anymore. What do we do? Where do we go? One-level living does not exist. I have a real estate company. It's impossible to find that stuff. One-level housing at a decent price point would be incredible. There's the ones up here, as you're heading out of town, those are out of people's budgets. There's some in Deer Run. It's out of people's budgets. You're talking over a half a million dollars for one level with a basement. Most people don't even want the basement. But yeah, that's kind of where I stand on it. It's an extremely important issue. And I would, I would rely on working with that committee to find a solution, once again, along with the community, the older Victoria community, for sure.
Candidate Roberts.
Yeah, I mean, this is an important issue for me. I got to help my grandparents move from southern Minnesota up to Chaska, to a senior facility up here recently. So I've definitely had to deal a lot with this. You know, one of it is, one of the things is, you know, communication, right? Finding out what our aging, our seniors want, like, you know, what they're looking for. Some people are ready to move to apartments, but some people don't want that type of living. They want the single, the smaller homes. And so it's important to have different types of housing available for our senior community, whether it's apartments, townhomes, you know, single-level houses. Garden Path is a great community where we have a lot of seniors living. I want to see, I would like to see more housing like that. And in fact, we had a developer come to us, I think about a month ago, with a plan of different houses in our South Growth area. And myself and the mayor at the time, or mayor, you know, both said, right, like, we did not like the idea of those houses. We wanted, right, we preferred to see different type, right? Like, they're all the same. We want to see more single-level houses. What happened to the Rambler? What happened to the, you know? So again, right, we want to make sure we have a lot of different options for our seniors so that they can choose what is best for them. Also, we do have a couple of senior facilities. Able Light is here, and we have one that's planning on coming in. Thank you.
Candidate Pedersen.
I think we're doing it. Two of the big things for me are making Victoria a better place to live and work and making Victoria a better place to retire. There's opportunities in the Southern Growth District. There's opportunities in downtown west. There's an opportunity on the west side of town with the Mira Project that is, that's actually been approved, but we're, we're still working with them to get that completely taken care of. I think that there's an opportunity for better mass transportation for those who don't want to drive all the time. But I think it's one of the top things that we need to address. And I think the commission and the council has started to do that, and I'd like to push it over the top. Thank you.
Well, I think we've covered a wide variety of topics this evening, and it's time now for our closing statements. So candidates will have one and a half minutes for their closing statement to summarize their qualifications and positions. And I'll follow the rotation grid. And so we will begin with candidate Pedersen.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for this opportunity. I hope you enjoy it when you watch it at home, and thank you for being here. I promise that if I'm elected, I'll represent the community with ethics and dignity. I'll listen and elicit your thoughts. I'll look at the concerns of the development projects, maintaining fiscal responsibility, and hopefully improving your quality of life. and hopefully improving your quality of life. I think promoting economic development and manage right-size growth is extremely important and a main priority. I also think maintaining your drinking water, your sewer water, and all your stormwater management is important, and I'm going to take those tasks on as well. I think Victoria's a safe community. We're going to keep it that way, and bluntly, I'm always going to be available for you. I think I'm experienced. I think I'm connected. I think I'm prepared for this role. Thank you.
Candidate Wright.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for tonight. And I just want to say hi to my mom at home watching. Thanks, Mom. I love this community. I'm, I'm here tonight, and I'm running for this seat because of the community, the community pushed behind me. I'm a voice of the community. I understand the, the different things that need to happen, but they need to happen with a vision. They need to happen the right way. They need to happen on the right dollar at the right time. The growth is happening fast. We need to rein that in and make sure that happens correctly. We have issues at the Victoria Rec Center. We're going to lose that. That's a business. That's a revenue stream. That ice, those ice rinks up there are junk. That's going to disappear immediately. That's a, that's a whole nother forum we can have just on, just on the Victoria Rec Center. But I love this community. I'm raising my family here. I chose Victoria to raise my family here. I want it to be the best community in the state of Minnesota to raise a family in. But let's have some fun. Let's make this place cool and awesome and fun, unique with a vision. And if you pick me, I'll have the right vision for Victoria moving forward. Thank you.
And candidate Roberts.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum, and thank you to the residents of Victoria. You've made the last four years great. Over the last four years, we have seen great things happen in Victoria. We have more restaurants, shops, and commercial spaces. We have kept up and improved our infrastructure. We've added competition for the internet and faster, cheaper fiber. We have added to our trails and parks and continue to look for ways to give our residents more things to do. We have been able to do these things by having a great public-private partnership, and we aren't done. We have our Western Development that should be kicking off next spring, that will bring more restaurants, shops, and housing, and bring more community gathering opportunities by linking our downtown and downtown West. Our Southern Development Area is starting to take off as well with the announcement of QuickTrip. This is just the start. We have heard our residents loud and clear when they tell us they want more things to do, especially in the winter. Our South Growth Area is a great spot for some of those possible amenities. Over the last four years, we have done a lot of good in Victoria. However, there's still much to do with big and exciting things coming, and I want to be a part of it. I have loved my interactions with residents and business owners and look forward to the opportunity to earn your vote and continue representing you for another four years. Thank you.
I would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate by the League of Women Voters. And now for our closing remarks. Darcia Durkin, our candidate forum coordinator.
Thanks, Sarah. The League of Women Voters, Eastern Carver County, would like to thank you all for coming tonight and our online audience for viewing. We would especially like to thank the candidates for being a part of the democratic process, for running for office, and being willing to serve our communities. Finally, we thank our facility hosts and our league members here volunteering tonight. The league studies issues important to our members and to the health of our communities. If you are interested in finding out more about what we do and how you can make a difference, please pick up a membership brochure at the registration table or visit us at lwbmn.org. Membership is open to all people. Individual household student memberships are available. You can find out more information about candidates and about voting at mnvotes.gov and vote411.org. This forum has been recorded, and the link will be available on the League of Women Voters, Eastern Carver County Facebook page. Good night. Thank you for coming, and remember to vote on November 5.